You have a beautiful place there. It's like two houses on the one lot?
Oh, no, it's only the one, the white one.
Oh.
The house next to me is Garrett Scott's room.
Oh. Do they access it from the same driveway or from another spot?
They access it from paperwork.
Oh. I've always thought that that was a two-house lot, but I've always so admired it. It's a very pretty space.
Well, the way, thank you. The way I understand the story to be is that my house was the show for his house and the blue house next to me was the serving quarters.
So he's in the showhouse.
Right.
Serving quarters.
The butler.
Yeah.
Very nice serving quarters. It's like full, it's like as big as the other place.
I was actually looking at parcel access yesterday at some aerial shots from 30s, 40s, and 50s.
Oh, wow.
And you could see the infrastructure, the roadwork, and it's pretty cool.
Yeah, neat.
Things have changed over a hundred years.
Yeah. Well, you have a very nice place there.
We're live, just seeing this.
Okay. I won't say anything I shouldn't. Thank you for the warning.
How are you?
Hey, Arthur.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good, how are you doing? What's that? I hadn't seen the, I hadn't seen the communication that you had only with her. That's why I asked this morning, just so that if there was going to be an issue.
I emailed her, because everybody else got back, we just shot her email.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello, Karen.
Hello, how are you?
I'm good, how are you today? How's your summer been going?
Good, yeah. Going on vacation, not next week, but the week after. I'm looking forward to that.
Nice, where are you headed?
Mariganser, Rhode Island.
Oh, okay, nice.
Just went to Newport this past weekend.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, nice.
Went to friends and we went up and coordinated the weekend. It's like, that's not too far away to drive.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was really nice.
Oh, yeah.
We had like perfect beach day.
You did?
Yeah, Saturday.
Nice.
But Sunday was a little rainy.
Did you just let me do that now?
Yes, 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 yes. We were like maybe 10 minutes from like where the main drag was downtown.
Okay.
Yeah, it was very nice.
If you start sweating, it, I know it's not because you're hot, I'm sorry.
I see her.
You think? All right, well, you have a plain pitch. We'll try to be quick.
She's not a minute to stop it.
All right, I see our quorum member perching.
Nice. Good night, how are you?
How are you doing? It is seven o'clock. Okay, all welcome. It's seven o'clock. Welcome to this Wednesday, June 25th, zoning board of appeals meeting for the village of Pauling. Will you all please join me in standing and saying pleasurable greetings? Okay, I'm very happy we have a quorum tonight so we can move ahead and do some real business here for our applicant. For any people here in the public, just to get them up to speed, the property here is at 68 West Main Street, formerly owned by the Webers, but then way back it was owned by the Sheridins. It's on, oh, yeah, I'll do that. It was owned by the Sheridins even before that and Sheridan Ave, I believe, is named after that family, which I think owned that whole swath of land. We'll do the roll call now, Amanda?
Chair Nicholas Corley.
Here.
Member Fred DeVito.
Here.
Member Danielle Anderson.
Here.
All right, thank you. One thing I need to make a statement about is something that our legal counsel has told me is necessary these days, even for the most casual conversations. Anything that happens in the way of communicating outside of a public meeting like this has to be mentioned, called ex parte communications. I think I've got that right, isn't that right Danielle? Ex parte communications?
Yes.
Okay. There were three minor moments when I had some contact with the applicant previous to any of the zoning board meetings. One was a very friendly meeting by Serafino's grandfather, who goes by Sam. He came over on Mother's Day morning to say hello. The house happens to be right across from me on West Main Street, so I've been watching the construction. Sam came over to say hello and to let me know that his granddaughter Maria would be moving in across the street this summer and he brought over a dozen eggs because apparently she raises chickens. So it was a very nice neighborly gift and a hi and to let me know what was going on. Another ex parte moment, I actually called JP, the architect, the day after the inspection. I was the only one who had shown up at the inspection and they had some questions about why they had been advised to stop working on the project. I didn't have all the information with me. When I got back home, I saw that there was a seeker form and I actually at that moment incorrectly informed JP that I thought it was the seeker requirements that had caused that recommendation for them to stop. It actually was not that, but I felt compelled to give him a call and tell him what I thought it might be. And then there was one last ex parte communication. Usually this never even happens, it's unusual to have three. But there was a meet and greet at Lakeside a number of weeks ago to meet two of the candidates who are running, one for mayor and one for supervisor. And when I was there, I saw Diana Thomasetti, who's part of the family and developing group here. As I walked in, I had asked her if she had gotten a phone call from our village inspector because we were expecting that he might give her a call about the project and enable some protection of some of the exposed areas. She had said yes, he had called. So those were the three little moments of ex parte communications that I have to state for the record. At this point, I think we'll call for a motion to open up the public meeting. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion. Open the public meeting.
All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. What we'll do first is we'll start, JP, if you'd like to give us the description, I used started on it last week, that last meeting, but for us in the public and for the record. And then we'll open up the meeting to others to ask questions as well.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for taking the time to hear our application and consider. The structure at hand is an existing structure that has been renovated and restored. The existing structure encroaches, it's an accessory structure that encroaches on the side yard. The minimum allowable side yard setback for existing structures in this zone is five feet. The existing non-conforming condition is two foot four inches. That number, that setback, has not changed. However, a patio, a, forgive me, a roofed patio has been added to the rear of the structure along the same plane. It's an extension of the existing footprint. So the proposed work, albeit an extension, is also non-conforming at the same two foot four dimension off of the side yard property line. The, there was also a note about height. The maximum allowable building height for an accessory structure in the zone is 15 feet. We are proposing 16 foot six. I will also please note that the existing building height is 23 feet. And there was one other point to note, which is the... This is section 98-16 from Article 5 of the Supplementary Regulations for Residence District Accessory Structures. 38-16A point 3 says all such buildings in the aggregate shall not occupy more than 25% of the area of the required rear or side yard. We are occupying, with the proposed work, we are occupying 13.23%. That is the proposed percentage. The existing is 9%. We are increasing it to 13.23, but we're still within our limit.
Still well within the minimum allowed, sure.
And unless there is anything else that the board would like to bring to our attention, any other questions or concerns, that, I believe, sums it up.
Okay. Thank you very much, JP.
You're welcome.
Any board members have any questions that I kind of jumped in there? At this point, I'd like to open up the podium to anybody in the public who might have some questions. Don't be shy. Neighbors were alerted. If there's anything you would like to talk about, anything that you have on your minds, this is the time to bring it up because we have just this moment to listen to the concerns.
I'm Bridget Clark.
I'm sorry, could you come up here? Yeah, I'm sorry. Just so that our microphones can pick you up. There's a microphone up there, right Amanda? Okay.
I'm Bridget Clark. I live kind of behind and I just wanted to say I'm fine with everything they're doing. It looks beautiful, you know, it was a huge eyesore prior.
Mm-hmm.
So I think it just, it looks much better.
Excellent.
Great.
Thank you very much, Bridget. I'm sorry, yes.
Nicholas, I just wanted to confirm on these plans.
Yes.
It says that there's a two foot four and a quarter setback. So is it just the two foot four inches that's required?
Well, that's actually a great question and I was going to bring that up at some point myself. JP, it says two foot four and a quarter and we want to make sure that any variance is granted, account for that quarter inch and we'll up it to the next full inch. So we just want to make sure, I'm so sorry that you were ready, but hold that thought.
Okay, so yes, my documents, the construction documents indicate two foot four and a quarter inch.
That's the distance from the property line.
That's the actual distance from the property line.
Okay.
I was reiterating the two foot four from the memorandum issued by LaBella.
Okay.
So forgive me, I didn't, I didn't include the quarter inch.
No worries. We're here to catch the little things and make sure.
It is, it is indeed two foot four and a quarter inches as surveyed by Robert Oswald
Okay.
and as documented and delineated on the documents prepared by my firm.
Okay, so I think what we're going to end up doing is we'll change some of the specific language, Danielle, so that since they are two foot four and a quarter, they're actually a quarter of an inch past where they need to be. Actually, two foot four would be a...
It's five feet.
It's less of an encroachment.
It's actually less of an encroachment of the five.
Five feet is the minimum requirement.
Yes, yes. And you're two foot four and a quarter, so if we make that two foot...
Just amend the variance to two foot four and a quarter, should you grant it.
What's that?
Just amend the numerical amount, should you...
All right, so we'll amend it to then two foot four.
Move forward with the variances.
Got it. All right, so we'll make it exactly to the measurement.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Thanks. All right, great. And I'm sorry, now, now you're up. Thank you, please introduce yourselves.
Yeah. I'm Michelle Munier and I live directly, I live on Sheridan, so I'm directly across from the garage part.
Got it.
And I see the back of the house. I don't have anything particularly profound to say other than I'm so excited to see this piece of property be fixed up because, as Bridget said, it's been a terrible eyesore and a little bit of an embarrassment as you pull into our street. So, yeah, I've been, I work from home and so I've been watching all the different stages out my window for quite a while now and I'm very happy with it. You know, the height of the garage doesn't bother me, I think it looks great.
Mm-hmm, all right.
And that's it.
Thank you very much, Michelle. All right, I think at this point, if everyone has spoken, oh, Jim?
Jerry Lucassio.
Jerry, I'm sorry.
No View Drive. Did we receive any emails from anybody?
We did not.
We did not. So I'm friendly with Craig Zatola. He lives to the house just to the east
Yes.
of the applicant, just prior to getting to the residence on the right-hand side.
Yes.
His residence is situated, so he actually oversees the secondary structure along with the roof line, the addition that's being, or proposed to be added. He had a medical issue yesterday. He's unable to attend tonight.
Okay.
Both him and Denise are tied up and the other family members are with him. Everything's all right, knock on wood, but when I spoke to him last, I said you might want to fire off an email. I know he has absolutely no problem with the, with the construction. Like the other neighbors, he's happy to see the house being fixed to its potential and he has no problem with granting the variance.
All right, Jerry, thank you very much for passing that on. Appreciate it. All right, I'd like to ask for a motion to close the public hearing. All right, can I have a second?
A second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Motion passes to close the public hearing. Okay. Are I going to read through the the, kind of the script of our, of our process here and what, what variances have been asked for? JP already went over some of those, but our applicant Serafino Dance, on behalf of Diana Thomasetti and the 68 West Main Street LLC, the property owner submitted an application for three area variances to legalize an existing patio and roof overhang at the property located at 68, 66 and 68 West Main Street in Pauling, New York. One side note, this was done a little bit out of order. We had a little bit of a clerical error and because of that, some work had progressed before the variances actually had been granted. So right now, we're kind of doing some catch-up so that paperwork gets in order and the rest of the project can, can move along early. The project was depicted in a plan and total proposed renovation and alteration of the carriage house and it was dated March 28th of 2024. The applicant seeks an area variance from the village polling code to allow a roof height, as JP mentioned, of 16 feet six inches, where 15 feet is the minimum allowed. The applicant also seeks an area variance of the village code to allow expansion of a non-conforming structure. This particular structure was built previous to the upgrading of the village code back in 1995. This carriage house has been there probably for about, I don't know, 80 or 100 years. It has been pre-existing as a two-bedroom apartment. It is continuing as that two-bedroom apartment and the only thing that has changed, as JP mentioned, is the extension of the rear patio and the overhanging roof protecting that area. The applicant is also seeking a variance to allow a side yard setback of two foot four inches and one quarter. We're going to revise that. We're setback of five foot minimum is the requirement for an accessory structure. Also, in accordance with the town code and the State Environmental Quality Review Act, the zoning board of appeals needs to determine a classification of this project and to determine that they are the lead agency. I think we need to take a vote on that, do we not Danielle? To declare ourselves lead agency?
I don't think you need a note, but we'll just continue with the resolution to type it.
Pardon me?
We're going to type it as a type two action.
Okay, so we don't need to declare our vote.
That's correct.
Okay. The applicant has submitted a short environmental assess form dated May 6, 2025. Now, I have been advised by counsel and our village planner that because of the scope of this project and because of the low levels of environment that it's not run out of wetlands, there's no endangered species that we're aware of. It's in a sloping backyard with a, actually very interesting hill that seems quite anomalous to the area. But I don't believe there are any environmental impacts that are significant with this particular project. And as such, I think what we're going to be doing, based on advice from counsel, is not going through the entire seeker form, but what we'll do is we will consider this to be a type two action so that it doesn't have to go through the same review. Am I wording this right?
Can I clarify?
Please clarify because you know the language better than I and I don't want to take this down the wrong way.
So under the State's Environmental Quality Review Act, we have typed actions, type one action and unlisted action or a type two action. Type two actions are the type of actions that are essentially insignificant in their scope and therefore don't result in significant adverse impacts. One example of a type two action that a municipality can undertake is issuing a building permit. In this case, the encroachment on the setback of a residential property is a type two action under the State's Environmental Quality Review laws. And so it's not that we're skipping the environmental review, we're just typing it as a type two action and that's our environmental review.
Got it. Okay, so what we'll need to do next is I'm going to ask for a motion for the zoning board to classify this as a type two action?
I think, I think the way your resolution is written is that it's all, it's one resolution and once, once you decide to make a determination on that resolution, you'll be at once agreeing that it's a type two action and/or approving the variances.
Okay, so as we're approving any variances, the type two is automatically enacted?
Yeah.
Got it. Oh, that's an unusual process that I was never aware of before during this 19 and a half years and we've, we've never had that happen while I've been sitting here on the board. All right. We have a duly noticed public hearing that was, is being held tonight. The applicable standards for considering an area variance are set forth in village law, which requires the board to take into consideration the benefit that the applicant has if the variance is granted and weigh them against the detriment to the health, safety and welfare of the general neighborhood or the community by granting such variances. Let me take a look here, just review a few little things. There are five criteria that we have to weigh the variances against. I think that each of the variances kind of falls into the same answers. Danielle, do you think it would be appropriate? Let me ask you, should we cover each of these five points for each of the variances? Or do you think we can?
We're going to go through each of the factors, but for all the variances combined.
For all of the variances?
For the three variances that are being considered.
Okay.
It's just drafted to go through the five factors for each of them.
For each one separately?
But at one time.
Got it, okay.
I mean, should you, should the board elect to do so? If you want to do it, for each, you can do that too. However you have it, however you so elect is fine, so long as the factors are outlined for each variance.
Yeah, I think what we'll, I think if we group them all, I mean, if we're either going to do this five times or 15 times.
I think it would be reasonable to group them.
Okay.
Yes.
I think so, too.
It's all for the same reason, essentially.
Exactly.
Yes.
So again, to repeat the three variances that we're looking for here, we're talking about roof height, which they want a variance so that they can be granted 16 foot six inches. They are expanding a non-conforming structure and the setback is a required five feet, but they're asking for two foot four and a quarter. So we're going to ask a number of questions now and discuss it among the board and, and get a consensus on what all the board members are thinking. In regards to those three variances that are being asked, the question that we have to review is if these requested variances will produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to the nearby properties. I personally feel that they will not be a negative impact or undesirable change. I think that the work on the current property looks pretty darn good. They're, they've got some very high standards. I think that they've improved the property considerably and I do not believe that this is an undesirable change. Danielle, what are your thoughts on this?
I agree.
She agrees? And?
I agree 100%.
All right, great. So this includes the proposed extended patio and the roof extension and the accessory structure in keeping with the character. Yes, they all are, we just covered that. Okay. The second thing that we have to consider is the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible, some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the requested variance. At this point, the construction is already done in this area. I do not believe there is another method to take care of the current construction and make it fit within the current zoning codes. So I believe that just the nature of the timing here means that it cannot be achieved by another method. Danielle, what are your thoughts?
I agree.
Freddie, what are your thoughts?
I agree as well.
All right. The requested variances, this is the third point we have to consider, are not numerically substantial. The requested variance for the roof height will result in approximately one foot six inch increase over the allowable height and the patio extension will result in two foot four inches reduction of the allowable setback. In this particular case, I agree. There are some times when we are asked to do very large variances in our decisions, but this is a matter of feet and inches in all cases. I don't see this as substantial. Danielle, what's your opinion?
I agree.
Freddie, what's your opinion?
I agree with you, it's four and a quarter inches.
I stand corrected, I sit corrected, thank you Freddie.
You're welcome.
You're keeping me in line here today, whether I'm doing the roll call or off by a few inches. I appreciate it. The fourth thing that we have to consider is if the requested variances will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. My opinion on this is that it's been quite an improvement to the neighborhood. The house, which is not part of this variance, is looking amazing and the carriage house project is looking very good as well. I think it's definitely an improvement and that there is not a negative or adverse impact to the environmental conditions or the physical in general. Agreed, all right. Freddie?
And I agree, this is great.
All right. The requested variance would allow the structure to remain in the existing locations, just so the applicant is aware because it does not have an impact on the physical or environmental condition of the surrounding area. The fifth and last thing that we have to consider is if these difficulties are self-created. In my opinion, this is the only thing where I feel like this was somewhat self-created. This applicant purchased the property with a certain structure of a certain size. They decided to expand the property outward and upward. I think it is self-created, but I don't believe that this is a major concern because I think in all of the other areas, the impact is very minimal. So if there's one area that I don't agree with, it's only in this one, but again, I don't think it's that significant and that that particularly should determine a negative decision. Danielle, what are your thoughts on this?
Yeah, I don't think it impacts.
Well, it's just a matter of if it was self-created, if, if the condition of the property was self-created, you believe it was self-created or not. And that they need the variances.
I believe they need the variances, but as far as that when it was built and what you need to build now, you're talking hundreds of years of difference, right? So, sure, it's self-created.
Okay.
That's going to make it move.
And Freddie, what's your opinion on this?
It was self-created, but it's enhanced in the building, so I think it's a good choice.
Yeah, I think so as well. Okay.
So then I would just remind the board, if you are thinking about what to determine about the variances, if there's any other conditions
Yes.
You would want to discuss.
I appreciate your reminder. Before moving forward with voting on granting or not granting the variances, there are some conditions that I've been advised to include, and that is that pursuant to Section 98-68E of the Village Polling Code, if these variances are granted, work must be commenced and diligently prosecuted within one year of the date of the granting of the variance, or the variance shall become null and void. At this point, it is well and diligently underway, so I don't believe that that will be a problem in any way for this applicant to meet those conditions. In order for these variances to be voted on and granted, we have to make sure that also all payments and fees of escrow have been up-to-date, made up-to-date with the village. And also, one other condition that needs to be made aware of is that these variances are granting this space, if they're granted, only as an open space, an existing patio with a roof. At no point can this ever become enclosed or converted in any way to become additional living space area. It has to be, still remain, it has to remain an open patio. All right? Did I state that all right there, Danielle?
Correct, yep.
All right. And that way, it is just an additional portion of the accessory structure, but not part of the residential part of that. At this point, I think I'd like to call for a motion to vote on the, I think, is it okay if we vote on the three variances at once?
Yes, at the bottom of page two there, you can, there's a resolve paragraph that you can use to help you with that.
Am I missing something?
Just be it further resolved.
Ah, it's at the bottom of table S. Okay, so I'd like a motion from the zoning board, one of the zoning board members in a second, that we resolve this by granting the three variances, subject to the conditions that I had just mentioned. Can I have a motion to grant these three variances?
I have a motion.
All right, can I have a second?
A second.
All right. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Serafino, JP, you have been granted your variances. I thank you for your patience. I know we've had a couple of meetings here rather than only one. I know this, this was done slightly out of order, and my opinion on that is, now we have all the paperwork in order on our end and on your end. If this had moved forward without the proper paperwork in order, this could have gotten in the way as an obstruction to a transfer of ownership of the property or a certificate of occupancy. That wouldn't be good for us or for you, because then we'd have to play catch-up way down the road. At this point, you're still in construction. I know that it put things off by a few weeks and that you had a little rain coming in, and I apologize, and hopefully there wasn't too much damage. But at this point, your variances have been granted, and you can move forward with your project, and all the paperwork is in order for you and for us. I think that's the best way for us to have done this, and I thank you very much, and I wish you the best of luck on the continuation of your project.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, one last thing I would like to mention, and this is not part of the granting, I'm sorry.
Did we actually vote to close?
We haven't yet.
You did? Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Public hearing. Yes, yes.
Thank you.
One other thing that I'd like to mention, and this is just as a courtesy to your neighbors, we have two neighbors here, and they seem very, very positive on this, and that's great. Your carriage house extension area is visible from a number of the properties nearby. I actually can't see that extension area from my property across the street, but I would just like to suggest, as a courtesy, that you are aware of what lighting you might put in that area, so that there's no extra bright nuisance lighting that might annoy some of the neighbors. One of the things that the board always wants to consider is that the negative impacts of any new construction are minimalized, so just keep that in mind. Again, it's not written in here, but I would just like to advise it as a courtesy to the neighbors in the area.
Sounds good, sir.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anything else any other board members would like to state before we close? Okay, can we have a motion to close tonight's meeting?
Are you doing your minutes?
Minutes.
Yes, we will. Boy, I think I might be dehydrated today. Thank you very much, Serafino. Thank you, JP.
Thank you for your late presentation.
Thank you, guys. Very complimentary. Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you. Keep up the good work there, JP.
Thank you, sir.
We have some minutes moving on to approve. We had a March 26 meeting, where Amanda diligently wrote about 17 pages of minutes. I've read them all over, and I, I will, I will state, I will make a motion to approve of those minutes. However, I did talk to Amanda earlier. In those 17 pages, there are a few little minor typos. The spirit of the minutes are right on track, but there's a few little word things and letter swaps that I'm going to give her, but I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for March 26, 2025. All in favor?
With your amendments of the typos or without? If you're going to give them to her, you can just vote to, to approve the minutes with the amended, with the amendments.
We'll, I, let's vote to approve the minutes with the coming amendments. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, and then we have another set of minutes from our May 28 meeting, a very brief meeting. We did not have a quorum. We discussed a few things. I think we only had about a page and a half of notes from Amanda, because we're advised to close the meeting. Can I have a motion to approve the May 28 minutes?
Can I have a second?
All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, minutes have been approved. Amanda, is there any other, other business that we don't have on our list today?
There sure isn't.
Okay, I'll make a motion to close tonight's meeting. Can I have a second? All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. You're not going to vote to close tonight's meeting? All right. Karen, 15 minutes longer than you expected. Thank you all.